Yes.
Thank you. We will call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Before we jump directly into our meeting, I think it'd be appropriate just to have a moment of recognition and reflection. It's been a tough couple of days for our ICSD community, and I don't want to proceed without honoring and recognizing that. So if we might just take a moment. Thank you. I also know, and I say it regularly, folks have heard me say it all the time, that I'm not afraid of silence, and sometimes silence is the best form of transition. There's usually no easy transitions other than just to recognize that it's not an easy transition, but we will proceed with our meeting as we have today with this recommendation. So with that being said, I'll ask for colleagues if there are any modifications to the agendas. The only modification I will make is I would presume we're not going to have a superintendent's report because Dr. Brown is both with the commission in Baltimore to this day, so that would be, I would humbly ask that we just remove that from the agenda. If you want to move forward. And you have the opportunity to begin our meeting. We're hearing about two amazing international experiences, so we'll call the German trip on the first weekend.
Hello. Good evening, Lord. I am Dana Peisley. I am our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade German teacher at that boy in middle school. I'm here with.
Stephanie Wintermeyer, I'm the German teacher at IHS.
And I'm here tonight to ask permission to take twenty-two, twenty-three students to Germany next summer. So here we go. That's what you should call it. The gap in the country in exchange. I'm reading the things you can read. It's very exciting. I teach English. So I am here with the German-American Partnership Program. It is a program that is sponsored by the U.S. State Department as well as the Austria-Germania Group in Germany. So it does have some recognition at that federal level. It does also come with a little bit of scholar, some financial support from the Gap Foundation. You know, borrowing approval. But there's more to reach about that to come. So what I want to do is I want to talk about our trip, then get into some specifics about it. Oh, I just set my notes. Oh, this is so much easier. Oh, starting again, okay. So I'm going to talk about what our trip is and then look into the actual specifics of what does it take to go, what are the costs, et cetera. So my plan would be to take students to the Adolfheim Gymnasium in Tuttlingen, Germany. Gymnasium looks like a friend here, and that is a false cognate. It means high school. It's the best translation for that in English, right? From old Greek gymnas. Anyway, so we got on Tuttlingen, which is down here. Oh, heavens, this is sensitive. Like me. So you can see us. We were down in the southwest Germany, right there on the Fjäer, right, so Austria, Switzerland, France, Germany, very close to this fundamental, the lake of Comstus. Moving a little bit closer, you can see the actual region that is Tuttlingen or the Kreis of Tuttlingen. And then to itself, and there's a beautiful shot of the city with wooden covered castle in the foreground. Lovely, lovely place. While we are here, most of our students are going to spend most of their time in the city. They have to go to school every day that we are there, that school isn't session unless we are taking them on some sort of trip. So in the past, that can be done somewhere around ten to twelve school days that they're taking on extra, where they go and they shadow a student and they engage in the classes just like their students did when they were here.
And I have to be there seven thirty A.M.
I know, let's consider, okay. Morning people stay. Bill, please hit the actual city itself. Beautiful desk, really, it's lovely. It's roughly the same size as Inka, that population roughly sixty thousand. And it is predominantly known for its precision medical equipment, the end-to-end surgery. You know, with a replacement kidney or spine that is likely to come from the manager, the new president of the world of placement, and he's going to get his home from the city. Neat. Just more of the city. Better look. This lovely little place is directly next to the school and stares at children all day while they're trying to do work. It's awful. This is our school, although that building is under construction, has now been fully constructed since the last time we were there. That is a brand-new science building. Beautiful, beautiful infrastructure. It actually has a neighboring school, the Eikardt, the Manuel Kant Gymnasium, and they have actually built a courseway so you can combine both buildings and students can go to one another. The Adolfheim is predominantly known for math and sports, whereas the Eikardt does music and fine arts. While we have students, we try to give at least one trip during each of the two weeks, four weeks of every year. This year, I've been talking and working with my partner in Germany. We are planning, or we are hoping to be able to take students to Tuttlingen, which is this lovely city here, as well as Tuttlingen, which are both well-known university cities. So we can also talk to students about the opportunities that university offers student journey. Right? They can always see some campus, they can see the library, they can see the facilities themselves. I'm trying to get one of the children to the kids myself, where we pop a train and head out to Pohlschance. We weren't able to do it this last round, and it's not the way I wanted because of the terrorist storm that knocked out the train tracks. You know, it's too much to pay for the fix to multiple transitions that I didn't want to do. All right. And then we can add one trip. I choose to start the event at the trip in Munich. While we're in Munich, we will do a tour of the city, we'll do a tour of the main, the death area, so the Läden, lots of these channels that are around it. We have a very slight distance in that space, but I also think it's important. So we do a trip out to the Dachau concentration camp. Recognizing that that is a difficult part of German history, but an important part of the history to confront, to recognize, to see how is this history managed and presented in comparison to what we see here, but also as students of German, they have to, that's a part of history that we have to confront. It is part of the teaching work as a German scholar to recognize that this portion of history happened. It was atrocious, and how do we learn when we ask? That's both the pair of those to the trip itself. When we take students, these are generally the things that we rely on. We are relying on. Notice this in the previous slide, no, it's here, but here we are. They have to commit to taking German. Part of this is to keep students in our program. So we asked them, hey, we're going to take you abroad. Please commit to making German in a year afterwards. Otherwise, that is, that is a spot on that trip I want to give to someone who is benefiting with the language. It is, you know, it's three weeks in Germany, but that's what needs to make all the difference for our students' confidence and skill. No rehearsals or suspensions during the academic year. You must, we are not made by a school-sponsored trip, so we are subject to school rules. We ask that students host to German students unless there are arrangements made, which that's all covered. The students, the German students were already here. We need to be more enthusiastic. It's not always going to be easy. It's not always very comfortable. We're going to ask them to do new things, and so we need most students who are willing to put themselves out there. I mentioned it a couple of times, so if I just mentioned that our families have already hosted German students, we bring in students during October. So we have with us twenty-two students from Germany. They stayed because of October tenth, the twentieth. We went to Baden Falls. They had to stay for now, hockey game, but most importantly, they were part of our students. They got to see the high school. They spent the day in the middle school, getting visitations to the high schools. They spent the day in the elementary schools, reading books to our third graders, who are going about the world beyond the United States, so that was an awesome opportunity. Pumpkin carving. They carved pumpkins.
It's not a thing until you saw something really special.
Oh, it was, okay. This one was great. This pumpkin carving, they got pumpkins for all of their kids. They sat down with each other with their partners, they were a little group. They did it way longer than they expected. It was just so heartening to see students honor American students, the Germans, to eat their home together, right? That was my opinion. That was my opinion on this trip. This is calming. Very good if you want, but it is a good thing. So here's what I'm proposing, and this is the the at the end of the day, this is what I've been asking. Right now, I'm just taking students from July fourth through July twenty-fifth, so twenty-one days. I will be going along with Catherine Semara and Benji Gerardi. So Benji Gerardi is an elderly German teacher. Catherine Semara is not a German teacher, but has shared her of this trip three years of experience now, so she's familiar with the trip. She's familiar with the location. She's familiar with the school. She knows some processes, and my parents, they're more organized to be in the world. That's why I get around them whenever I can. Students have a good school lesson, a trip planned for that day, like we said, depend on what I mean. So they will be in school, they will participate in each of ten days, looking at that as kind of a shorter trip. While students are in school, they have their own standards. They are doing what they're supposed to do. They are seeing what life is like for the average German teenager with all of its excitement and boredom to go. Said we're planning for two trips, so our club sponsors the trips for students while they are here. Their school in Germany sponsors trips for our students while we're there, right? So that's not on our families to pay for. That is on the school and their generosity. Students in Chaperones are going to spend the last two to three days in Munich, where we do our Munich things, at the funeral. I estimate the trip to be around twenty-five hundred dollars, and you have a standard, about how I got to that now. So, what about that term now? Did you see that the German is sending a sheet?
I could read, still.
We don't. You don't?
We, we.
We have it on. Electronic.
So the long and the short of it, our last trip, all in consideration, it cost fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. I had a ten percent to adjust for changes in costs. I see about ten percent in the morning, which is what I was thinking. Breaking through a rough, a rough cost around sixty thousand dollars. I had more participants at the time, but breaking that down was about twenty-five hundred dollars per family, recognizing that I'm going to make some changes in my plan to make that number.
That can be recognized that twenty-five hundred is not just change, but that includes everything. We are going to take this, we possibly, some of the food that the parents don't provide. And so I like to say, there's not the money, but it's not expensive.
Yeah.
For all of our three weeks.
Right. It's very vintage, well, exchange, and a big chunk of that already, I've got in the estimate for my airfare, which is quoted at sixteen twenty-four a person. Hurts my soul, but that's the number they said it must be, so that's the number of building. I do have, there is more information in there about how I'm going to have funding. I do have some gap funding that I comply for. They on an average, will give about twenty-three hundred dollars to groups. Our math says we should be eligible for up to twenty-five, twenty-five, because so much per student and so much per adult. So we should be eligible, we should be eligible up to twenty-five, twenty-five, but I have to, I need to get approved before I can apply to that. And the important thing here is while we spent nearly six thousand dollars while hosting in our last exchange, I cut that number in half for this post. So that helps to make up for that shift, all of the differences in numbers there. You also have to see, you know, you have to leave the ball to students who are signing up to go. You get to know the German partners. It's like, and I also included for you all, just, this is our calendar from the last exchange. You could see that from there. Note Sunday is all the way to the right. But they are. Then, okay, postmark is still looking like calendars will not be in the United States. Okay. That brings me to Nordrhein.
Which means welcome, dogs.
Yes.
So you're asking beautifully.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to dig that. Is there any further questions that you have that I should feel for?
First, thank you for the presentation and for giving us the information. Very hopeful. Colin, board members, questions, comments?
Because this trip actually is not a new thing. We have been doing this since nineteen eighty-nine. So this is an old tradition, I feel at this point.
With approval, this would be my seventh that I've been, I participated in, and the second that I fully have planned.
Well, thank you very much for answering my first question. How long has this been going on?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so it's always good to see that we have these exchange programs. I've known neighbors of mine who hosted German students while their students were at the high school. And I'm always reminded, as well as reminding the community members, when we talk about the budget, this is things that we talk about too, that the opportunity for students to not only speak a language, but actually experience the language and the culture and the importance of that. So thank you for this. Now, this program has been going on since nineteen eighty-nine. So do you now do it every two years?
Yes.
So originally, there was actually preschool, what, an high school, home high school, and IHS, we did it together. And then unfortunately, I stopped teaching German and what, and then come up. And so we are the one left, and we cannot, we don't have enough students to do that.
Right. Historically, right, we're split across the districts. There's a lot of us here to do an annual exchange.
And how many students did it the last time? Who part, how many students participated? Because you said that there were more than this time.
The last run, uh, no, last time I had twenty students.
Oh, twenty, okay.
So we have a few more this time coming with us.
And, and at any point, do you have returned students or it's only one-time experience?
It's a one-time experience. That way we, we aim it between, functionally, what becomes between their sophomore, junior year, or their junior, senior year, depending where it falls in the rotation. So for many students, this is the only shot I have to be able to attend, because they will have matriculated of school for the next exchange.
So do you have seniors attending?
No.
No, just juniors.
I have, I have, yeah, this will be sophomores becoming juniors. I have one, I have, I think I have a couple of juniors becoming seniors. But, yeah.
So this, this is good that you've seen, have you seen since middle school, students are taking up language that they've continued throughout, because I know in the equity report card, some years ago, probably right before COVID, we saw that there was a reduction in German, like students taking AP classes in that language. So this is a good incentive as well as engagement for, to connect the students to the program.
Yeah. I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head, right? This is one of those things that it's so infrequent in the land of academia that we take what we do in the classroom and give it or you make it something tangential, make it experiential, turn what you learn in the classroom into sense and flavors and sounds, and that's what the exchange does. It takes the theory of German and makes it people places and memory.
So I could put my name on the list for chaperone.
You betcha, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I wonder how many people have been excluded over the years because of the requirement for no administrative actions or suspensions. None, I I wonder if we need to keep that in then, just, just to mention it. And I say this after having been close to a German student who did not always through his own fault, have one or two administrative actions during his time in high school, sometimes for being involved in a fight that he didn't start. And that kind of thing does happen all the time, so.
Yeah, and I, I totally, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with you, right? That statement of none?
Yeah, that's pretty harsh.
I think, I, I think it's better read as none with an asterisk, recognizing that why things occur is an important part of what happened, right? And I think that's part of the consideration, should anything come up. We've never had that problem.
So to your knowledge, there been, there's no one who's been excluded.
There has never been someone where we've had to say, ooh, we have to tell you no now.
Yeah, I, I feel better knowing that. Dunka.
Yeah, Giana.
I will double down on Jill's. That was the one question I had as well, or maybe rethinking some of that language, or you know, discipline will be reviewed or something like that, which gives a little bit more flexibility, obviously, right? But zero tolerance is sometimes difficult when there are circumstances that may be on students' control.
Yeah, I I think that statement mostly lives to put a little, little fear into some students.
Yes.
But recognizing that human is more important than words on paper, and that's the part that we teach, right? And what happens or why a thing happened is, that's important.
Other questions from board members, comments?
You mentioned, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned at the beginning about resources that may be provided to students and scholarships. How often are those actually used and how frequently is that made, that knowledge made available to students even in middle school, as they may be thinking about whether they want to continue on with their German studies?
So we are able to provide financial support in a couple of different ways. We do get some funding for the program itself through Gap. Gap does also have individual scholarship opportunities that students can apply for. And we also have a small fund of generously donated funds from previous exchanges that we can use, and we always offer up when we are doing our information for families to say, look, you can come talk to us on the side. We don't need to make it a spectacle, but we can help make that cost attainable for you and your family if that's what your circumstances need. I've also real, like, I, I've known this number. I've may have worked ahead of the, the permission, but to try to make that a more attainable number, I've really, I've tried to split it out, that payment over a longer period so that it's not as much of a burden to the family budget at once. And we've had, I've had some families who are like, let me just pay it right away, and other families that are grateful for that, that direction.
And would you say that that, thank you, would you say that the, the group that goes on the trip is reflective of the larger group of students who are matriculating through German classes?
Yes. As I said, i- is it reflective of the entire school? Maybe not, but it is reflective of our program for sure, for, for sure. We didn't turn anyone away this time, did we? No. So everyone who applied to go, we said yes to.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other board questions or comments?
Thank you. May I just? Uh, I recognize it's a tremendous amount of work to put this together, and just want to thank you for that. And just piggybacking on Sean's comments, the historical alliance between the United States and Germany and the broader NATO framework is going to come under a lot of strain. And Europe is at war, and I think it's never been a better time to try to make these person-to-person connections and to increase understanding. So thank you for doing it.
Yeah, we'll call a question. I'll also just again add an acknowledgement of the amount of work that goes into planning something like this. And so folks may see it as if you get to travel, but the reality is it's a significant amount of work and responsibility, right? So highly aware, thank you for the willingness to do it, for putting it all together, in addition to everything else that's being asked as well, so. Thank you. Make it, that work doesn't go unnoticed. With that being said, we'll entertain motions if someone wants to make the motion for the resolution.
I move to approve the international field trip to Tuttlingen.
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 Tuttlingen, Germany. I'm getting close, July fourth to the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five. Second.
Moved by Karen, second by Jill. Any additional comments? We'll call the question all in favor. Fantastic. I'll write a small check so I can get a T-shirt and it's not a gift of public funds. Fantastic. Keep us posted, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, we are blessed this evening, board colleagues. We get to hear about two international exchange trips. Our next presentation will be an international field trip for Vietnam.
Yep. Mic is on. Yeah. Oh, well, I see the slides on my, my device. Hurry up. Hey, well. Good night, or good evening, everyone. Nice to come, and thank you for having me. I'm Robert Torrey. I'm a teacher at Ithaca High School. And last year, we went on our first trip to Vietnam. This was in February of two thousand and four. So we're here to ask for approval to go for a second trip, which we're hoping will be in April two thousand and twenty-five. So I was hoping to show you some pictures of our trip last year and tell you about some stuff that happened, and then get into the to the nitty-gritty of the trip itself. This was, I don't even think that's most of our group. When we went last year, we had thirty students and six chaperones, which was a very large group. We were near the highest mountain in Southeast Asia, which is right behind us to the right. Fancy Pan, it's called. Okay, so, yeah, last year we went to Vietnam for, we were gone for nearly two weeks, maybe it was like thirteen days. We were in Vietnam for probably about ten days. Thirty students, six chaperones, including Martha Haristy and a few other teachers from the high school and Stephen Anderson, a dean last year. So we did raise last year well over ten thousand dollars. We fundraised probably about eight thousand. We got an eight thousand dollar grant from IPEI. We gave out significant scholarship money to eight students. One student got a full trip. We went, generally in two locations. We were in the north of Vietnam, Hanoi, and within several hours of Hanoi, a couple of bus trips. And then we took a flight in-country and flew down to the south, and there we spent two days at a school where I worked in Vietnam. I should probably tell the, the board about how this trip originated to, for, for any new board members who weren't here last year, but in two thousand and twenty-three, I was in Vietnam on a Fulbright fellowship, and I was teaching at a bunch of schools and doing some educational research. And I went with my teenage son, my high school son, and while I was there, I really thought like this would be a really great experience for high school students, and I'm, I'm sure that many people would be interested in seeing this very interesting country. So I have a few pictures of, of our trip last year. This is actually the whole group with all the chaperones, and it was our first day after we, well, we probably arrived in Hanoi late in the day of the day before. So here we're doing the, the standard Hanoi walking tour around the city where it's called. walking tour uh, around the city where it's called the the Temple of Literature, which is a very important uh, cultural landmark in Hanoi. And uh, yeah, so this is later that night after dinner, we went to uh, this it's called the Train Street in English anyways, and it's like a well-known tourist destination where you sit at a cafe on this tiny little twisty street and a train comes by at a certain time every night. Uh, so after we were in Hanoi for two days, two and a half days, and then we took a two-day trip to Ha Long Bay. And and here um, we were on a cruise overnight, which was a really amazing experience. The students on the right, they're um, making spring rolls. And while we're on the cruise, we we took a day trip and they did sea kayaking. We went into a cave. And uh, the next picture is also on the Ha Long Bay trip, so we stopped at an island. They had uh, a pickup volleyball game with a bunch of Vietnamese people who were there. And that's just a group shot of us. Uh, I think it was right before we got on the boat, possibly. So that was a couple of days. And then um, for two days, also in the north, we took a bus ride to uh, a city called Sapah, small city, which was at most fifty thousand people. It's way up in the mountains. Um, that picture with the the highest mountain in Southeast Asia, we were there. So here uh, we did some trekking. I think the next picture is like us hiking. And there was one day of community service. We spent a full day at this very remote little school in the mountains. It was another hour bus ride from the city of Sapah. Um, and it was a students from elementary up to high school age. So uh, here are some some students working on English with these little kids. And uh, one of the tasks we did for them was uh, to make a a walkway that would function in the rainy season. Uh, it gets really wet and it's and it's a very hilly area. So we, they did some pretty hefty physical work here. They were hauling uh, wheelbarrows of gravel and mixing up the the cement and pouring it. And then they they decorated the the pathway with their names and and uh, the year they were there. So we're hoping to go back to the same place this year. Uh, also, we we were there from maybe nine in the morning until three or four in the afternoon. It was a long day. They made food together. Uh, they taught our students some uh, like traditional cooking and cuisine from from the north of Vietnam. They taught them embroidery. And uh, and then we planted cinnamon trees in their school garden too, which is what's happening on the right. Uh, so then we went back to Hanoi and took a flight to uh, a city in the deep south in the Mekong Delta called Kenta. And and here is um, we spent two days at the school, one of the schools where I worked when I was in Vietnam. And uh, in Vietnam, school starts at seven AM, so forget seven thirty. We were there at seven AM and stayed that day. We were at that school till ten o'clock at night. Um, and it was real, it was the real landmark experience of this trip. So in the morning, our students went to classes with a Vietnamese partner. Um, we paired them up and mostly they went to English classes, but they did go to other classes as well. Uh, just observing what the day is like and and meeting their teachers and and other students. And then we ate lunch at their canteen, like the equivalent of their cafeteria. In the afternoon, we went for a walk all around the campus, and it's on a major university in the south too. So we walked around this university campus. Um, which it specializes in agriculture and forestry. So there was a lot to see while we were there. And then in the evening, we went back and and our students spent the evening together. We had a catered dinner uh, of traditional Mekong cooking, which is really amazing, just course after course coming out. Uh, they played soccer and frisbee and basketball and karaoke. And uh, it went on the whole night until like ten o'clock. And by the time we left, many of these students had made friends, they said, for life. Which they still keep in touch with. Uh, so, oh yeah, and then after after Kenta, we went to um, Ho Chi Minh City for a day. I'm going the wrong direction, I think. Okay, sorry. Ho Chi Minh City for um, a day, day and a half, and uh, there did a lot of city activities and and the most important of which was to visit the War Remnants Museum, which is one of the major educational purposes for going on this trip um, to experience this this world-class museum that very categorically lays out the twenty-year war that that Vietnam went through um, with French and, well, even starting with Japanese and then French and and then US to ultimately end up with a reunified country in the mid seventies. So, and we get to this clicker. Here it is. So um, I'm hoping that we could approve another trip or that the board will approve another trip. And uh, here are some educational aspects that I think are really relevant for a trip for American teens to go to Vietnam. So the cultural exchange is is significant. Um, we made videos, introduction videos before we went, and the Vietnamese students did at the school as well, and we swapped our videos. So they got to learn a little bit about the students, and there were just more general videos made about like our campus and what our school offers. And then we spent uh, one day at the school in the north and two days at the school in the south, which were very different cultural situations, a rural school and an urban school. Uh, the history of the involvement of the US in Vietnam is very also important and very eye-opening for students. And everyone has learned about the war, but to see it in their perspective is uh, a very different experience. And in addition to the War Remnants Museum in Ho Chi Minh City, we'll go to Independence Palace, which tells a slightly different aspect to the story. It's uh, a lot about the history of the South Vietnamese Republic and ultimately ending in the reunification. Uh, possibly, we're going to go to Koochi Tunnels this time, which tells the story about the the Vietcong resistance in the south. And then in Hanoi too, there's a Vietnamese National Museum of History too, which we went to, we'll probably go for this trip as well. Uh, and and especially the last day we were in Ho Chi Minh City, we went to the War Remnants Museum and and students were in awe. We were there for two hours and it's a really moving experience. Um, so the other, the last aspect, I think, which is really educationally important for our students is uh, Vietnam is really has many glaring environmental problems from pollution to climate change, and it's really part of everyday life. And and students will see it. And uh, uh, one of the focuses of our our time in the school in the south was when they went to English classes, the students in the English class gave presentations on environmental issues. Um, and it was, I think, really good for our students to hear it from them and not from a teacher. So. There it is, student interest. Okay, so we're uh, we're hoping to go with twenty students this year. We decided to scale it back. This is uh, Martha and I talked a lot about the trip and how we would alter it in coming years. Uh, we did have a pretty abbreviated enrollment period this fall. We didn't really start talking about the trip until September. So in September, we tried to enlist some students. We had uh, twenty-five people submit applications. We're going to take twenty. And uh, I think ultimately, we didn't turn down anyone because uh, th- that some of the people just by attrition just left the club. Like, we've been having club meetings every couple of weeks and and we're down to a pretty solid eighteen or twenty. And if we go with less than twenty, that's perfectly fine too. Um, so we did have, we did have a rubric that I've used now, pretty similar to last year, which we're trying to to favor seniors because they won't ultimately get the the experience again. But we do have some juniors. I don't remember the exact um, distribution, but I think it's probably three-quarters senior who are in our club now with some eleventh grade. So uh, ultimately, the trip will probably cost about three thousand dollars. Uh, I've been searching for uh, flights. And uh, I'm working with the same travel agency that I did last year. They're really good, very responsive. So it seems as though I can get the international flight from JFK to Vietnam for about fourteen hundred dollars a student on a group rate. Uh, we had a really, really excellent travel agency in Vietnam who organized all the accommodations. The forty-five-seat bus, air-conditioned. Um, they had a twenty-four-seven English-speaking guide with us the whole time, who really went way above board and did many things to help us out. Uh, in some sticky situations, we found they got our E-vises for us. They were an excellent group, so we're working with them as well. And it's about fourteen hundred dollars uh, a student. Uh, we're getting travel insurance as suggested uh, by the 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 district in international travel uh, requirements. And um, we did last year, and we're hoping again to uh, give a carbon offset to Finger Lakes Climate Fund to uh, help cover our travel and our carbon footprint on this. Uh, so we started some fundraising. Uh, we've done yard work and students have stacked firewood. We have sold uh, bulbs, uh, tulip bulbs primarily. We probably have raised a few thousand dollars already. We will have a chocolate sales in the winter and a couple bake sales. And we're also planning on doing spring yard work as well in March, probably. Or hopefully, assuming this gets approved. Uh, we did last year, we're trying to make the trip sustainable, so we we raised a little bit more than we needed. And we will start this round with about five thousand dollars in the club account. Uh, so, and and that came out. It was very handy last year. We had, we needed some money uh, towards the end. So we will be giving scholarships to at least four or five people, and depending on how much money we fundraise, um, we're hoping to at least cover the airfare for some students, which would be about nearly half off their trip. We're hoping to raise six thousand dollars. So if they raise six thousand, then it would be, um, actually, it's three hundred dollar reduction off the cost for each, not two hundred that was that was uh, remaining from last year. So the product, the cost of the trip will go down to more like twenty-seven hundred dollars per student. And uh, here are just some some last safety considerations. Uh, in red up in the top, these are all things that I've been discussing quite a lot with with Martha about um, how we should address potential safety issues on the trip. So um, students will be with chaperones all the time unless we're in the hotel. We will not be going in any water at all. Uh, like the the sea kayaking, we won't be doing, but there may be a boat ride, but no one will actually be in water. And no one will be on motorbikes. And then some standard safety precautions. Uh, there are some vaccine required, or not requirements, but suggestions. And I've mentioned this to to students and when when and if we have a parent meeting, I will acknowledge it to them. And uh, also, we were very careful last year to advise students to be careful with uh, street food. And um, water was uh, a surprisingly significant expenditure and concern because we had to get bottled water all the time. And it was mostly supplied for us on our bus, but whenever we were off the bus, we the the chaperones bought bottled water for them. And so we had source of water all the time. Uh, and then follow all the obvious district guidelines about uh, medical forms and parent signatures and and um, well, last year, we did, we gave out home COVID testing uh, a few days before we went, and there were no issues with that. So that is what I hope to present, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any questions about our trip last year or what we propose doing.
Thank you greatly for the presentation. For colleagues, questions?
I just had one. Thanks so much for the presentation. I remember from last year, I was very surprised. I think as a new board member to see this trip to Vietnam, I thought that was very cool. Um, I just had one quick question, just because you mentioned that the guy had helped you out of some sticky situations. I guess you intrigued me with that, and I just was one wondering, can you give an example of what?
Well, the 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 prime, the biggest one was um, the day we were leaving, we went to the Saigon Airport. And a student had what presented as pink eye. Uh, just pink, like seriously, just like a red eye, like, you know, anyone who's a little kid uh, has had pink eye in their house. Well, the Qatar Airways was immediately concerned and um, took us off to the side and through a bunch of discussion eventually, they said they weren't going to let him on the, they weren't going to let him on the flight without a doctor's note. And and we probably had four hours before the flight was leaving. So I called um, our local guide and he was at the airport within probably fifteen minutes. And then took us to uh, an emergency room at uh, it was a hospital very close to the airport. And within an hour from the the incident starting, we had seen a doctor. And uh, yeah, so.
Wow.
It goes on. But we got home. It took it took a few days. We got home. Um, his flight was delayed. I stayed with him. And and uh, the Vietnam Travel, um, Alan was the man who, he was pretty high up in the company, and he was with us uh, and checking in on us nonstop and set us up in a hotel at company cost. And it took us two days, but we got another flight back. And he he was, he was treated by a doctor while we were there.
Sounds good. Got to get that guide back.
We will.
Other questions, comments?
Um, yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, with the safety concerns, those three in the red, were there issues from last year's? This earlier this year's trip, why, like, no going in the water?
Well, the eye infection could possibly have come from water. That seems to be the most likely source for it, like tropical freshwater. He also wore contacts, and they were contacts that he wore every day. So this is just information that I was told from him and his parents after going to ophthalmologists while back in in Ithaca. So it seems like a very easy one to say like, no one's going to go in water. Uh, because it was potentially the most obvious place that could have happened.
And um, with regard to the vax vaccine recommendation, it's a recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Um, so therefore, will you have a waiver in case some people opt not to?
Yeah, I think in reality, the the ones of most concern that are recommended are hepatitis A and B. Which I think, but I'm not positive, are also required to go to school in New York State. That's that's what I've been told by the nurse. So it's it's really not an issue for anyone. And and depending on where you go in Vietnam, they may suggest uh, malaria medication, but it is not at all concerned for where we're going to go. We're primarily in cities and not deep in a jungle area where that is a concern. So, no, I think it's worth advising the parents about it and the students, and I will, I will uh, tell them which vaccines are suggested, but it is, I'm pretty certain also required or ready to go to school.
And all of this will also be written down for the parents that they'll know.
Yes, definitely. Yeah. They got, they got a multi-page information sheet last year.
I, you know, I just, again, thank you. I mean, I I I heard about the two days delay coming back, and that's that's a lot of time. Uh, we we, if I may share, we we got an email from, I'm going to say this right, the Consul General at the US consulate in Mumbai about a week ago, two weeks ago, uh, attributing his uh, role as consul general to an exchange trip he took as an Ithaca High School student. So I just want to note that, you know, it it may be a decade, two decades, three decades from now, but uh, these small actions can often have big results. And so I say that both for this trip and the German trip. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Well, I will double down on the thanks, the gratitude again about the work, and I never miss this opportunity to share when I took students to Ho Chi Minh City as well, and they were having a conversation about the Vietnam War and our guy didn't know what they were talking about and said, oh, you mean the American War. And it was such a radical shift for our students. So we talk about the culture exchange. We've also been to the museum. Um, to watch them be able to see it in a much different light, from a different perspective, um, was life-changing. So I'm very appreciative that we have this opportunity to take some of our students on this journey. So thank you for for that as well. And I also. some of our students on this journey. So thank you for, for that as well. And I also heard about last year, and so thank you for um, again, having led these trips. I know those things are easy, not easy to deal with in the moment, so.
Yeah.
Um, glad that you had a good guide, uh, to see someone within an hour from an airport is that's far beyond US healthcare system. It wouldn't have taken.
Yeah.
Taking a little longer than that.
Yeah.
Um, but with that being said, if there are no other questions, we'll entertain the motion.
Okay, I move to approve the international field trip to Vietnam, April tenth through twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Fantastic. We look forward to the presentation.
Thanks so much.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Uh, with that being said, we uh, make a point. Just so folks know, to have special presentations uh, at the beginning of the meeting, recognizing that oftentimes there are students and our educators uh, that we want to make sure they get home, get ready for the morning. We're trying to get to our board reps. Uh, but we'll begin with uh, public comment, and I thought I saw one person had signed up. Yeah, I don't have the.
I know him, he's not here. TV's online, yeah.
Okay, we'll follow up with uh, Brian and tell him that can follow up with us and we'll make sure that we write that space. Um, then we'll continue on with our uh, agenda, and that brings us to student reps. And every meeting, I forget who went first last time, so I'll let you all work it out.
Good evening. Um, I guess we'll just get straight into it. So there's been an incredible number of students looking to get their New York State seal of belligerency this year. Um, so over sixty-two students have signed up, which is almost twice as last year. Um, last year, there were thirty-four seniors who received the seal. And IHS Drama Club presents their fall play Radium Girls, and tickets have gone live today. Shows are Friday, the twenty-second at seven thirty PM, Saturday the twenty-third at three PM and seven thirty PM, and Sunday, the twenty-fourth at three PM. And due to recent events of students flushing vapes and food down the toilets as well as unruly behavior, the monitoring of hallways and bathroom entry um, have gotten significantly stricter. And students have been assigned to guard the bathrooms during their planning. Or sorry, teachers have been assigned to guard the bathrooms during their planning periods. And we have heard some concerns from teachers that this new responsibility is cutting into their previously longer planning time. And we do understand that the, the assignment is contractually permitted. Um, but we didn't think that teachers were gonna have to sacrifice their precious time to supervise students going to bathrooms. Um, there have been frequent incidents where students have been denied bathroom usage for not having passes. And Ms. Hardisty and the administrator said they were working on this, such as implementing a system where seniors can present their IDs if they were stopped in the hallways during a study period in which they wouldn't be assigned to a specific classroom. Um, but on the good side, there's less vaping, um, at least in the most popular bathrooms in the building and there is more availability of stalls at a given time because students aren't able to congregate in them anymore.
However, we did receive an update that students are now vaping in the hallways sometimes, so I guess they find new holes to do it in. But in different news, I talked about this at the last meeting, this was going to happen, it just did happen on October thirty-first. The Climate Justice Alliance, a group of nine to twelve students who are passionate about environmental causes, um, went to a presentation or a conference at Hobart and William Smith College, and we gave a talk there. It was, it was well received. Um, we gave a talk primarily about the climate resolution that was passed last June and the lobbying work that went behind that for some of the sustainability advocates and some of the student groups, as well as the climate action plan we hope to pass this year. So on that subject, I have been authorized by the Climate Justice Alliance to also give a brief rundown of what that will be in very, very short. We'll hear more about it in coming meetings, but just to keep it on your guys' radar. The Climate Justice Alliance is in the process of writing a comprehensive climate action plan, which we'll present to the board by the end of the year. It's meant to build upon the moral commitment made by the climate resolution last year and set a more specific path towards a more renewable I C S D. This is still in the very beginning uh, stages of formation, but just to keep it on your guys' radar, so it doesn't blindside you when it does happen. And then we have some sports updates. All right, here go, here goes. Boys varsity soccer, ten-one and one in the regular season and first place seed in tournaments. They lost the stack championship in section four championship games. Uh, boys JV soccer was undefeated and won stack championships. Girls varsity soccer lost the stack championship but won section championships. Girls varsity tennis eh, team stack in sectionals finals versus Vestal. And girls varsity volleyball lost stack championship game, but they went ten and one. The boys varsity golf team uh, finished third for stack championships in individual rounds. And uh, girls varsity swim has six all-stars, both boys and girls cross-country teams won the stack championships. And the boys team won the section four championship. The girls team took second since states is happening soon. We have a number of competitors who are expected to, if not win, place very highly.
Thank you for the high school, LACS.
All right, um, a few things. Um, so as many know, uh, LACS is a very democratically um, oriented school. It, we should really be called the Lehman Democratic Community School because it's uh, very central to us. Um, yeah, corny, whatever. Um, as always, LACS encourages students to engage in open-minded discussions around current events and politics. And that hasn't changed even with the most recent presidential election. Um, following said election, humanities teachers at ACS have been leading debriefs and conversations. Twelve students of all parties digest and process what went on, um, you know, potential shocks, et cetera. Um, this year, LACS has a newly adopted policy around political neutrality, trying to remain as politically neutral as we can in a very heated and um, eight-fueled climate that we're in right now. Um, just making sure that students are open-minded and listen to other perspectives. Um, on that note, um, there have been lots of conversations from students around what this election, like what impact it will have on democracy at home and abroad, and what implications it'll have on our broader world, specifically the conflicts in Israel and Ukraine and um, support for Taiwan, et cetera. Um, on this note, before the election, we had our annual civics ASM. In past years, we've had panels on the Senate filibuster, branches of the federal government. And a, and a sit-down Q and A with then Mayor Myrick. Uh, this year, with the election then less than a week away, uh, high school students cover the electoral college, the popular vote, the Maine and Nebraska electoral votes. Um, our local, you know, district, um, and the race to two seventy and how either candidate could get to two seventy. Um, I believe middle school students covered a more dumbed-down version of this.
Simplified.
Yes, that's a better way to put it. Um, on a completely different note, um, LACS has entered cycle two, our, the second half of our first semester. Um, all students have new projects ranging from study halls and sustainable thrifting excursions to ice skating and community service. Um, I'll highlight instead of what you get a little into this with the Akasazny uh, community services requirement at LACS. Thirty hours for middle schoolers and sixty hours for high schoolers. Um, the cycle began today, actually, and will end on December twentieth, our last day before the winter break.
Yes, hi, Ron. Um, I'm gonna start by highlighting um, our theater program. Our theater program is putting on The Tempest um, this Saturday and Sunday at Boynton. Um, it's really exciting. A bunch of kids have been working super hard on this. Um, Emily being one of them, she's at rehearsal right now, so that's why she couldn't be here. Um, and we have a really unique student leadership initiative within our theater program. Um, so students have been involved in all phases of the show from directing um, and so much more. I'm not the theater person, so excuse my lack of language around it. Um, but yeah, there's been some really incredible work there, um, a huge time commitment, and I'm sure everyone's really excited to pull it off. Um, I'll highlight the journalism conference that the IHS Tatler and LACS Chestnut um, attended, myself and Caidman included. Um, yeah, I got to go first. Um, we attended a conference on Monday at Columbia University um, with students from all over as far as California. Um, it was really inspiring to just be around other student journalists. There were some great workshops. And it really inspired us to just think about the way that we run our paper, uh, what types of articles we write. Um, we are in the phases of revising our mission statement now, which is really exciting. Um, and yeah, it was just a really great experience. Um, and also a great bonding experience for the Tatler and the Chestnut to kind of come together and do some intermingling, and I know he wants to speak to it, so you can go ahead and I'll take it.
Shoot, you beat me to that. I shh, I completely forgot to put that in my statement. Um, I would just say, from the Tatler's perspective, we were really grateful to be able to do this with the Chestnut. It's nice to have bonding experiences across high schoolers with similar interests and I hope that this is a tradition that will continue for years to come as we hopefully both go on the trip together and, you know, attend courses and lectures. It was, it was a really great experience for me personally, and I know that other members of the Tatler found it to also be enriching to be able to engage with their LACS counterparts.
Um, yeah, and then speaking to what Brandon said ear- earlier, we've had um, visitors from the Akasazny Freedom School um, shadowing, touring our building um, throughout the last couple of days. Um, and this is in light of our service class that did not happen in its full for, its full capacity um, this year, just because of lack of students who enrolled in the course. Um, however, there's still a really good number of students who are really passionate about continuing that connection. Um, who have been hosting them. And um, they've been going on field trips, exploring Ithaca altogether and just learning about what they do there, and they've been learning about what we do at our school. Um, so they are in my third period today, so it was just a really great um, great conversation, great dialogue. We have a lot to learn from them and they have a lot to learn from us. Um, yeah, and I think that's it for us. I think, okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, high school reps. Uh, board responses.
Oh, thank you very much, both LACS and IHS. And it was good to hear that you went on this journalism conference. Now, did you discuss or learn anything about how do you increase your readership? How do you ensure you are reaching the whole student body or close to the whole student body?
Yes, that's a great, a great question. I think something that we're all always working on. Um, that's really the hardest part of it, getting someone to read the article that you write. Um, I attended a workshop surrounding that, um, and an idea that the Chestnut had come up with. Um, that fits our own curriculum is, uh, a lot of our teachers have weekly news assignments, um, where we choose articles. Um, usually from larger papers, um, but we're hoping to incorporate the Chestnut into that. Um, so even if it's through force, getting people to read them, um, and I think just always like that personal outreach um, is important in our s- small school. Um, so I'll let you guys speak to it too, but that, those were some of my takeaways.
Yeah, I mean, similarly, I also went to one or two presentations. One thing the Tower specifically was thinking about that we might toy with in the future is expanding to a more multimedia approach. Ideas around podcasting and, you know, uh, online other, other, other forms of online engagement are really popular these days. It might not be possible for our paper, but we're thinking about, you know, possible ways to expand to encompass the many different facets that high schoolers receive information through these days. I think the age of purely print journalism is kind of going down the tubes because we're entering an age where there's so much more social media engagement, there's a lot more of a visual representation to what we're learning, and I think that's the way people in this generation have been trained to receive information, for better or worse. So trying to figure out how to tap into that too is important. We went to some workshops also on design. And Tatler has a very storied design history, but we're always looking for ways we can change it to make it more applicable to the modern day. Think of ways we can make things more colorful. I know that a couple of years ago, one thing that helped a lot was we went to a workshop at Columbia. We've been going to this conference for years and we learned how to do this thing called a double truck, which is a specific type of center spread, which has become one of our more popular features of the Tower. So it's really, it, it's nice to see how these things can progress over time, and we're hoping that some of the things especially involving color and um, we went to one particular, sorry, this is a little unrelated, but we went to one on equitable engagement with students of different backgrounds and how to expand journalism to, you know, different student, uh, different members of the student body. We are, as, as a paper currently pursuing a collaboration with the Ithaca Times to hopefully increase writership, to get people, you know, say that if you write for us, you can get your work published in the Ithaca Times, which we hope might attract a broader population of students, but we're, we're gonna see how that goes. And we're also hoping to um, really put, make a bigger effort to push for Tatler's surveying of the student population, especially according to demographic and in places that we think might not traditionally be students who are reading our newspaper as much, to see what they would like to see in the Tatler, what would make them read the newspaper. And so, yeah, we're thinking about maybe in the next couple of months undergoing some large survey operations to see if that can be made possible, but that's just a couple of things on our minds right now.
Additional questions, comments?
Um, I just had one, I guess. Um, I appreciate Claire, the, the updates that you've been giving us on the the vaping in the bathroom. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about this issue that keeps coming up every week. Um, or every meeting. I guess, it feels like a two-part problem. I mean, the, the one-part problem is, well, I guess it's a multi-part problem, but I guess, you know, the vaping is one problem, although I think probably since the dawn of, you know, schools in uh, the United States or maybe other countries, people have probably been smoking in the bathroom. So it's not a new thing, um, but still problematic. Um, and then I think also the question about, you know, teachers and staff sort of having to monitor the situation and sort of how that's happening, but I guess they're, you know, getting some emails from, from parents also. Um, and hearing about some students that are sort of hesitant to use the bathroom because of everything that's going on, so. Um, I guess I'd be interested in hearing maybe an update at some point from maybe administration at the school, just to kind of like get a little more of an understanding from that perspective of what's happening and maybe a plan to kind of work on the problem, because it sort of seems to be a problem that's reaching across a lot of different groups. Um, and I don't wanna uh, you know, be alarmist about it either, but I'd like to, I guess I'd like a little more information about it to hear, and I'd like to come up with a solution or hear about a solution to the problem.
Uh, to that point, Adam, I would recommend that we um, talk with our admin. It's gonna come up later in my NISBA updates, but one of the uh, sessions that I went to was about uh, what they're calling the vaping pandemic, so I want our community to know that Ithaca is not unique, and in fact,
Sure.
folks are calling high schools the ground zero of the vaping pandemic. It is not like cigarettes. It is vastly different because of the ease, the lack of odor, you name it, a host of things. It's a, it's a very, it's a unique circumstance for this day and age, so yes, I think we need to have um, an extended conversation, but I see Grace has something to say as well. Claire, my apologies.
Um, uh, that reminded me of something, so I got to mention is that Ms. Hardisty and a few other administrators made a video for us. Um, I think it was about specifically about the bathrooms, right? Some other things too that have been going around, but like behave, you know, and so it was like, they used the recording studio and created a very formal, formal video that, and required all of us to watch it in our classes. Um, and like, it reached a very wide audience of people, I think, but just maybe not have been the most efficient way to make people listen to what you say, you know, like, um, but like, the I, we know that the administration is working on trying to get that out. Um, but yeah, we would like to hear more from them about like, why exactly they're doing this and that.
Hi, I just wanna add, um, because I have a class at IHS this year, so I'm there. Last period, just another issue to kind of like put on the radar, um, is also like only being permitted to use the bathroom in the hall in the wing? Sure. In the hall that um, you have class in, so like if I have an H pass, I'm supposed to use the upstairs H bathroom. Uh, the only issue with that being all the things that Claire just said, right? Like, vaping in the bathroom still despite teacher presence. Um, just being full, like there's four stalls and a lot more kids than that. So that's something else. Like I know there's some concerns about skipping and misusing that there. But yeah, also like if I have to use the bathroom and all the stalls are full, I'm going to walk somewhere else. So. Yeah, just finding a way that like allows students to still use the bathroom, but not abuse that privilege of this.
Yeah, I think we'll follow up again with administrators, including the high school and at Central Office. And Claire, I make a point in my classes to talk about the importance of names. And so the fact that I may have done that twice, I want to offer, I'm recognizing, I want to offer my sincere apologies. Names are extremely important. I, I appreciate the recognition. So, right? So we won't make that mistake again, I promise. One other quick comment. Stella, do you want to speak at all to the amazing experience you had with, with an author? And I'm assuming it was an amazing experience.
Yes, you can assume that. It was incredible. Yeah, we had Dr. Kimmer, who's the author of Braiding Sweetgrass and numerous other books. That's the one I'm most familiar with. Came in for lunch and where I think twenty-ish students, not a huge group. Were able to sit down with her and ask questions and just, she's really an incredible mind to be around. So being able to hear from her and engage with her and hear also just her support of, who we are as a school and a community and our philosophies was really incredible. Yeah, I don't know. It was just a really like inspiring experience. That's a book that we read in so many of our courses from English to science in our school. So it was just really incredible to be able to sit down with her and like hear what her life story is, what her process was in writing that. Because it's become such an integral part of our curriculum. Yeah, it was great. And people were just like so like honored to be in her presence and it really felt that way. She's incredible.
So I wanted Stella to speak to it because it was a phenomenal partnership between Ithaca College and Ithaca City School District. Dr. Kimmer had just come the day before at being at the White House or receiving the National Humanities Award. Which passed around to everyone there. It was amazing of the number of LACS students who have actually read Braiding Sweetgrass. A book that I would highly recommend for anyone to read and then did some professional development with, a number of educators who from Ithaca City School District, who also then attended the evening lecture. It was a full day for Dr. Kimmer. But, and she did say to me that the students were the best part of the day. So, so thank you for, for sharing that as well. Any other board comments? Thank you. We will continue on with our agenda. It brings us to the consent agenda, if I'm not mistaken. And we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students. And minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. I feel compelled to mention that in this consent agenda, there are a large number of appropriations of funds. And included in that is somewhat of a glimpse into the number of grants that ICSD, receives and or seeks out. So I want to thank all the folks who are active in writing these grants. But if you look, there are grants from a number of organizations funding a number of projects, both local, state and federal. And so we're just very thankful for, for those funds and for that work. But questions, board members, comments, Jill, and then Karen?
Earlier today, when I looked at the documents that we have available for the meeting. There was some reference to changing the way that the Committee on Special Education, is presented in our, in our board documents. Did, did anybody else see that? I'm not necessarily opposed to a change, but I did notice that there was a major change. I didn't see the special education, run down the way I normally do. And I wondered if someone could speak to that. Perhaps I'm the only person who reads the special education.
I didn't notice the, the change, but I know now that I'm looking again, I know what you're referring to.
Oh, okay, good.
Yep. So they tell me what the listing of services, right? Is that?
No, it actually said something like, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my laptop tonight, but it's, it said something like, we, that we plan to going forward, not, not list the actions just to approve them. Emily, does that, does any of that ring true to you? I'll have to go back and. Yes, but it showed up in my documents. So, but everybody else got to see the regular special ed. Okay, never mind.
You know, I'm.
Know what happened.
You know, so the reason why I'm somewhat confused is I'm logged in, right? And so I wonder, I would assume that, well, I know in this board docs platform that we get access that not everyone does. And so that may be why I didn't pick up on it because.
Cause you saw it.
Yeah, cause I saw it and I'm logged in, but I'm wondering what that would look like if I wasn't logged in.
No, I didn't see any of, yeah. I just wondered because we hadn't had any discussion of a change, but if there's been no change, that's great. Thank you.
Yep, no, great question. Thank you. Do you feel like it's been answered sufficiently?
I do. I do indeed. Thank you.
Karen?
Yes, I am abstaining from nine point one since I was not here for that meeting.
Any other board comments, questions? I do have one question. I assume that Dr. Brien would be the answer to this. One of the agenda items is around surplus of motor vehicles, but it says auction. Right, but it gave, the resolution identifies three different options, right? But are we assuming that all of these vehicles are going to auction? And so I don't have questions. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just scrapping the vehicles. So I wanted to know if they're going to auction or not.
Yeah, sorry. Just thought of another question. There were a lot of stipends reported in the personnel report. For various clubs and teams. Is there any sort of standard for how those, how, how those are applied? Not in terms of who gets them, but just if, for example, three students wanted to form a club, of some sort, would they, and they were able to find a, you know, a supporter or staff to cover them? Would that be okay? Or is there some expectation that there be a minimum number of students? I mean, some of the clubs I'd never heard of. Couldn't quite figure out what they were.
It was an exhaustive list of.
It certainly was, which is admirable.
Yes, no, it reminds me of the many opportunities. Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Zach Lynn, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. And so a couple of things. One, schools get sort of a budgeted world money for clubs, right? So that's, that's, so it's not like there's unlimited club funding. And then each of the specific clubs are actually put in part of the contractual agreement with the Teachers Association as well. So I believe all those clubs that you see there are, are written out and agreed upon.
So they're all approved clubs in some way?
Yeah, yes, yes.
I think what we were asking is if we can get more information, it doesn't have to be now, but about sort of the process, about what is the process for, club approval, right? Does it need to have an officer? Does it need to have?
Yeah.
Right, be.
Yeah, we could, could be an HR mini update as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Great question. I, I was also noting that. And we also are appointing some of our spring athletic coaches as well. Additional questions, comments, board members? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda with Karen's noted abstention for the agenda item. Passively honestly, thank you very much. We will continue on. And part of that means that we will, skip over the superintendent report. Again, Dr. Brown is participating in a conference in Baltimore. Brings us to school business eleven point one, which is a resolution requesting a school board voting seat on the Tompkins County Industrial Development Agency Board. This resolution was brought to us by the Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council. Unfortunately, the person who's leading that, Aaron Croyle, is not able to be with us this evening. But I know there are other board members who were in attendance at, for part of that conversation. And didn't know if anyone feels that they could speak to it or want to speak to it. And I'm happy to do so as well, having a long conversation with, with Aaron. But I prefer Jill. I was not there, so I prefer you.
I attended that meeting and it's somewhat parallel to some discussions we've had, in the Revenue Exploration Advisory Council. So, I, I appreciate Aaron's getting a resolution together so quickly and so thoroughly. I have also attended several meetings with the Industrial Development Agency Board, the county's Industrial Development Agency Board. So I feel like I've learned quite a bit about their process. And I agree with the other council members that, certainly some sort of school district or school board representation on the IDA board. For the, for the reasons outlined here in this resolution is, is, is very much warranted. The meetings I attended, most of the people who were there were county legislators, if not all. There was one member who represents unions in the area. I've forgotten his name. But everyone else was a county legislator and although they all expressed great concern, for how the tax abatements affect our public schools. There was no one there who could speak to it in, in particular about the effects. In fact, they seemed sort of surprised that there were members of the comment of the public speaking there, about their concerns of the effect on property taxes and therefore very specifically school budgets. So I certainly support this resolution and I'd, I'd love to put it on the table if, if, if that's appropriate.
It is on, as listed as an action item for this evening after some discussion. So it, it is listed on for us to vote on if the board so chooses. Additional comments, questions?
One question I had was, I, I know that previously it was stated that the school district was part of, the Industrial Development Agency Board. And I found an article back dated to two thousand and five, when it stated that the school district, Ithaca City School District came off of the board. So I wanted history as to why we came off of this board and what has transpired during the years.
I am happy to say I in fact was not on the board in two thousand and five. I know that may come as a shock to many of you, but that was before my time, but I do remember that conversation taking place. That it was actually, my recollection was, it was the school board's decision to no longer be on that board. The reasons I cannot speak to, but there are a number of IDAs, folks probably know, many people, some people may know. There's people here who know it far more than me, but there are IDAs throughout the state, industrial development agencies throughout the state. Some require a school board representative for the largest school district. Some do not. The, it's usually made up by, at the county level. So there are various, various groups, the way in which there, those IDAs are, are set up.
And, and I heard something very different, speaking with the person who chairs the, the IDA, as well as the administrator who seems to run things there. And what she told me is that there's no requirement for, for a school representative to be on the board. And that roughly ten years ago, there was an effort to have that accomplished and it didn't pass.
That's correct.
So she didn't indicate to me in any way that it was something like, there weren't people who wanted to do it or anything like that. It was just that at that time, the IDA did not vote for that to have a permanent seat or a school board member. Or a school district administrator member. So there's a lot of confusion about this because some people will come to meetings and say it's required. Why isn't this here? But I've been told very, very clearly that it's not required. And it would require a change in the legis, county legislature to have a school representative.
I think we're saying the same thing. It's, yeah, I don't, it, it's not required to my knowledge.
Yeah, but it's interesting that in, in some sense, people have the sense that, you know, we opted out of it, but to my knowledge, we did not. It wasn't, it wasn't really offered to us. It was looked at, but then.
Well, Ithaca City School District did have a seat in two thousand and five.
Did they?
Yes, there, there was membership of a school board member.
A voting member?
Vote, well, that I cannot.
See, that's, yeah, it gets tricky.
Right, that's a great, that's a great question. And I don't want to speak out of turn as well, so we should probably do some research. But the idea being, and part of the reason why this comes up, and I think people have been paying attention to it. One is the most recent decision that has taken place, which some folks have been following, which was a fairly large, a fairly large development project. But also, as we say, Ithaca City School District in our county is the largest taxing entity. And so the question becomes when there are tax abatements, who is impacted for what reasons? Does it mean that folks will vote one way or the other? It's just a question about having a seat at the table.
Yeah, I may just, I may just add the finance committee will be inviting the, IDA to come and speak to some of this. So maybe we'll be able to communicate with them directly. Also, it, it, may I propose a slight change to one of the whereas is this? So the fourth, whereas, whereas the ICSD along with other school districts in Tompkins County have a vested interest in decisions made by the, TCIDA, as these decisions impact the funding available for essential educational programs, et cetera, et cetera. I would just like to add to that. Not only does it affect our available funding, but it affects our costs. I mean, it's not just that we're not getting the tax revenue. It's also that we're potentially going to get a, a line of kids at the door of South Hill. So I would, I just think we should add, you know, lost revenue, but also added cost to the resolution, my, my humble opinion.
And given that the person who's put the resolution forward is not here. I'll, how should we proceed, whether that is a friendly amendment or not? I don't, I don't assume that there would be any objection adding.
I have every reason to think she would approve of that, as do I.
I, I, I don't want to speak for Aaron, but I'd be very surprised if she didn't nod her head.
Yeah, yep. I would support it in terms of the, the language that, that's there. And if I'm not mistaken, and again, some of them may know more than me, but I am under the impression, and again, this is an impression. And I apologize if it's a falsehood, someone please correct me. That T K or Tompkins County IDA is going to begin reevaluating its membership over the, in the very near future. And so this is the reason why this resolution is coming up, is to put something forward saying that if there is a reevaluation of the membership, then some school entity should have a seat. If not, I actually would be much more specific respectfully. And say the Ithaca City School District should have a seat and our neighboring districts could make their own argument for a seat as well.
Yeah, I was told that that was going to be reviewed in December. So that's the reason for the, the urgency of this resolution.
Additional comments, thoughts, questions?
My comment was also in the fourth, whereas where we shouldn't state. Whereas the ICSD, along with other school districts, were responsible for ICSD in Tompkins County.
Aaron did write to me and say that anytime that that happens, where it's a reference to another school district, that they would support the removal of any reference to other school districts and keep it focused solely on the Ithaca City School District. Cause I think it's also in the sixth or seventh, one, two, three, four, five. The sixth paragraph also has a reference. Whereas provided a voting seat for a representative from ICSD or a member of any local school board. There's a reference to it there as well. So if I'm understanding correctly, so far from what I'm hearing, would be a change in the language of the fourth paragraph. As these decisions impact the cost and the funding available, is that what I heard for that paragraph? And then removal in two places. What I heard for that paragraph and then a removal in two places, also in the fourth paragraph along with other school districts. Even though that one is not as impactful, I think as the second one, which is trying to advocate for a representative for a school district that we are not a part of. Which would be in the sixth paragraph. And we should be clear, the way in which I read it, I'm not sure this is the intent, the way in which I read it is simply to be at the table. Is to be part of the conversation and in the discussion and the vote. Additional. Comments, debates, questions? Hearing none, did you catch those two changes?
I have to make sure that.
That'd be that'd be fantastic.
Whereas the ICSD has a vested interest in the decisions made by the TC IDA. As these decisions impact the cost and the funding available for essential educational programs, services and infrastructure and. That was the first whereas, then on the sixth, whereas providing a voting seat for a representative from the ICSD. On the TC IDA board would ensure, et cetera.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, that's my understanding. No, I think the first one actually is a statement of. Of fact, as opposed to a recommendation, if that makes sense. Hearing no other comment? We will, well, my apologies, we will not call the question because we have not entertained any motions.
We can retroactively assume that these were all friendly amendments.
Yes.
And move forward.
Yes, unless there is an objection. It's a loose approach to Robert's rules. We will entertain motions. Yes, Dr. Trevor.
A resolution requesting a school board voting seat on the Tompkins County Industrial Development Agency Board. Whereas the Ithaca City School District ICSD is committed to providing a high quality education to all students. Which relies at on adequate and stable funding, particularly through property taxes and whereas the Tompkins County Industrial Development Agency. TC IDA has the authority to grant tax abatements and incentives to businesses. As part of its economic development strategy, which directly affects the property tax revenues. Collected by local governments and school districts, including the ICSD. And whereas decisions made by the TC IDA regarding tax incentives can reduce the amount of school tax revenue. Available to support public education, creating financial challenges. For the ICSD and potentially shifting the tax burden to other property owners. Or resulting in reduced educational services for students. And whereas the ICSD has a vested interest in the decisions made by the TC. IDA as these decisions. Impact the costs and funding. Uh, for essential educational programs, services and infrastructure and whereas several. Industrial development agencies, IDAs in New York State include school district representatives as voting members. To ensure that the perspectives of educational institutions are considered in decisions that affect public school funding. And whereas providing a voting voting seat for a representative from the ICSD. Um, on the TC IDA board would ensure that the interests of public education. Are appropriately represented in a decision making process and would promote more equitable. And transparent economic development prac- practices and now. Therefore, it be resolved that the Ithaca City School District Board of Education. Respectfully request that the Tompkins County Legislature amend the structure of the Tompkins County Indust- Industrial Development Agency. To provide a school board representative with a permanent voting seat on the TC IDA board. And be it further resolved that such representation would allow for the active participation. Of school districts in decisions that impact school tax revenues, ensuring that economic development initiatives. Do not disproportionately affect public education funding and promote the long term well being of the community. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to. The Tompkins County Legislature, the Tompkins County Industrial De- Development Agency. Governor Kathy Hochul, Senator Leah Webb, Assembly Member Anna Kellis and other relevant state and local officials, and I so move. Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Emily, there was one additional change that I'm going to assume is also friendly. If folks Jill did an excellent job. The third paragraph from the bottom. The last sentence or whatever, but it says selected by local school boards, that part we would delete in. Connection to the other change that was up there as well. Thank you for for making that on the fly change, Joe. That is fantastic. Uh, additional comments, questions?
Yes, just just hearing Jill eloquently read the um. Resolution, I I would uh recommend that on fourth whereas after the word costs that we insert the preposition of.
Yes.
Impact cost of and funding for?
Yes, cost of and funding for.
Yep.
I think, yeah, we could remove, oh, oh, I I don't think the word available is necessary, but I don't think it's. I don't think it's harmful either. I'm indifferent.
I agree.
I would I would just propose removing it.
Yep.
Doesn't really have any.
We're just trying to make it more grammatically correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Those are all friendly for everyone, those changes, I want to make sure. All right, it's removed. Second, any additional comment, debates? Hearing none, we will call the question. All in favor of this resolution? It passes unanimously. Thank you all very much for working through that. Um, that brings us to agenda item eleven point two. NISBA Conference debriefing reports. Uh, folks may know a couple of weeks ago, was it a couple? I don't even know when it was. Was it a couple of weeks ago? Was it last week?
About at least two weeks.
Two weeks ago, uh, two board members went in person to the New York State School Board Association Conference. Um, in New York City, if I can say that, and uh, two board members participated in the virtual experience. We wanted to provide just a brief opportunity to give any update or highlights from that conference. Both to share with each other as board colleagues as well as our community about the kinds of sessions that we attended to try to. Do our own professional development as school board members, and so I don't know if who would like to start?
Well, I could start. I was in person along with Aaron Crowell. And what we've decided to do, some of the slide presentations and every any notes, we've. We've had our district clerk create a um Google Drive so that we can put all of this information. I've sent some information to. My colleagues, but it will be housed there and as usual. These conventions always have a hot topic. Last year it was electric vehicles. This year was cell cellphone ban. Since the governor of New York State, Governor Hochul, had passed um encouraging school districts to um enforce. Or a cellphone ban, so there were, there was a middle school who shared their experience on it. And what they did and how and a high school whereby the students were involved and was. Had agency over the input of what would it look like um for a cellphone ban? We know through our board information, we've received um material about um these pocket holders for cell phones and everything. That would be costly and it would may not behoove us as a community to go that route because some schools who have gone. That route and other states this have stated how costly it is. Um, Aaron and I are also on the TST School Board Association and we wrote a letter to. The governor to Assembly um member Anna Kellis and Senator Leah Webb stated. That let the ownership of a cellphone policy be with the local school district. And so that we can work with our administrative staff and to come up with some sort of policy. To be used throughout the um. Whole school district, but what was interesting with this middle school is that they stated um, it was due to suspension. Rates, they had a high suspension rate of um cellphone users, so that's what what prompted them. To enforce a policy and they said the the um pushback was really from caregivers and parents. That needed to urgently contact their student and. And if they need to contact them at any given time, although the administrative staff had stated, suppose we have some sort of emergency. How can we reach the law enforcement and other emergency agencies? If um you're contacting all of your students, so they set up a landline. Which was new to some students and in an office in the building. So that students can have access if they needed to have access and they. And some, quite a few students had commented how they were um elated that they didn't have that. Cellphone holding them and gripping them because they weren't on social media or anything of that sort. So um, that continues to be a discussion that we're having within this district as well as within the region. Um, another session I went to was staff reductions, which they talked about. Um, collective bargaining agreement and guidelines for civil service layoffs and a few other concerns that. Um, need to be addressed um due to um quite a few budgets being voted down or the possibility of some budgets coming. Close throughout New York State of being voted down. Um, there was a conversation with the state Ed Commissioner of Education, Dr. Betty Rosa and Dr. Jeff Madison and Jay. Warren, uh, who is an attorney, and they talked about working with um Homeland Security for a toolkit for students on safety. Coming out in November. They also spoke about regionalization, which our TSD BOCs is having conversation. About regionalization, asking, they're not asking local schools to give up their identity or their local programs. But a process needs to be in place. How could we share some services? That other regions or other school districts are having and when our um. Our presenters were here earlier talking about the German trip and. Cortland and Homer are no longer having the German trip because they no longer have that offering. That's prompted me to think too about regionalization and the possibility of us reaching out to other schools. Who may have students but not have have a and a large number of students to participate in a. A course like this or any other, so there was also um. A session on onboard and school board members and superintendent evaluation. And what they stated about superintendent evaluation, look at it as a professional development. Don't look at it as a gotcha moment that we need to. How can we attack the super superintendent, but how can we grow together within the school district and it was even stated that those superintendents who have. Are the longest running have a more impact with the student body. So there was a host of sessions offered. Aaron and I um looked through the program and there were certain ones that interest us as well as we said, let's go here to bring back information. To the whole board and but it's um a good opportunity to go meet colleagues throughout the. State as well as learn, especially since being on the board, there's no. This the on the board training and then there's additional training, which we all receive newsletters and. Quite a few emails that we receive from NISBA, so it's also good to have these sessions where they're very interactive and. An opportunity to um. Um, hear from the presenters as well as um speak to them afterwards. And there was a session at the very end, which was um one of the artists from the piano guys, if you've ever heard of that group. He did a storytelling and with his storytelling, he spoke about the importance and he plays. A cello and has forty odd cellos that he has a name for each and every one of his cello. And he was sharing about the importance of music programs within. Within um public education and how he had the opportunity to go through um public schools and. I remember when I took the violin in elementary school up to middle school and played the piano on my own and and I. And my children had the opportunity and I saw you were in the con- in the concert, the collage. Um, was it last week, the last week or the week before? It was on the Wednesday, October thirtieth and. The collage, if you've never been to Culp Auditorium at the collage, I no longer have children in the school district. But I don't go as a board member. I go as a community member. Getting this opportunity because I'm always impressed with the music that we have in this district. It's like going to Lincoln Center or or Carnegie Hall. And when they came up to the crescendo of they were playing Thriller. My goodness, that was absolutely fantastic. To see the um band get together, the choir get together, the orchestra and. Culp Auditorium stand in room only and to see the amazing work that we do within our mus- music program and the students. Who benefit from the program.
Thank you, Karen. Jill, do you want to offer any reflections?
I I found the um, I I did it virtually and um. I found it disappointing. All of the offerings weren't available online. They selected some and gave sort of a a reader's digest, for those of you who remember Reader's Digest um version and. I I found it really disappointing. I it seemed simplistic. And I didn't get to hear some of the things I would have liked to have heard. So. It's kind of a thumbs down for me, at least on the virtual part, and that was disappointing.
We're going to encourage you to go in person next year, Joe. We'll talk, we'll talk. Uh, I also did the virtual component. I think there were two or three things that were. Um, surprising to me. Uh, the opening sessions for folks who are in person uh was offered by uh Sophia. Um, and Sophia is a combination of artificial intelligence, robotics and technology. And so in essence, it's an AI robot that is engaging on stage um with dialogue. I don't know what I felt about it. I'm still trying to process it, um, but I do know. There's something there, both good, bad, not both all good, bad and indifferent, if that makes sense. It was a very interesting process. Uh, depends on what question was being asked, right? Some some of them were about education, some of they were not, right? Were I don't, were you in that session?
Yes, and um I was there in person and the audience felt a bit uncomfortable. There were some people.
As did I online.
Like kind of airy feeling because it was the executive director at of NISBA who was having a conversation. And at one point he had to turn to the side. And just say to the audience, this is really strange. I'm talking to a robot and the interaction, but yet. The responses were as if a human being sitting next to a.
With facial expressions, right? I mean, it was a, you can find videos online. My understanding is Sophia. This is the title of the robot, the name of the robot is traipsed around the country to do a number of things, so it wasn't just at NISBA. No, well, it provides, it's it's a robotic version of ChatGPT.
Yeah.
Right, and so it's spitting back again that a little probably a little bit more.
Synthesizing what it's what's been fed into it and.
Absolutely, or then we say, you know, I'm not authorized to give that answer, right? Things like that, so that was an interesting thing just to watch, just for board members. It's worth. Taking a look at if you can find a video of it. I was intrigued by that. I attended, um, you know, hearing Karen say about cell phones, folks should know. Cellphone policy, thank you for the TST BOCs letter. Uh, Emily and I have been talking about cellphone policy. It will be on a policy committee. We'll continue to be. On a policy committee and folks should know that um Mary Granger and Carrie Burke have already been working with. Union leaders to have conversations about a cellphone policy. We anticipate. Um, parents and caregivers being brought into that conversation as well as students. We don't know where it's going to go, but just know the dialogue is happening and looking at additional information, so we'll. We'll do that. Um, I was also intrigued by the presentation that um Karen sent about the school, the middle school. Putting in a landline because that made me think that we are finally teaching. Students a new skill, which is to actually memorize somebody's phone number, right? Which is going to be a very interesting thing, so we'll see how that. How that works. Um, the two things that I also participated in that were interesting to me were a number of sessions about um. Addressing student absence and chronic absenteeism. Um, again, it's a statewide, it. At this statewide conference. At this statewide conference is a statewide concern. And so it was very interesting to hear how some school districts are trying to address it. And how a number of school districts are not able to figure out what's going on and and struggling. Um and then um a lot around mental well-being and and um social emotional learning. And then I was really intrigued by one of the uh the last session that I attended, which was talking about technology in the classroom. But spent a good deal of time actually talking about the significant increase. And high school and middle school participation and online gambling. And it's something I never would have thought about until they were presenting data and the significant increase going from. Two percent five years ago being self-reported to upwards of thirty-three percent. Being self-reported of high school students who've participated in some form of online gambling. And so. That's something that I don't know that how germane that is to our district. But it's something that, again, those those data points really grabbed me and I want to do a little bit more research. To our board colleagues, you can find the um the listing of programs online on NISBA's website. And I, when I have not attended and I found a session that intrigued me, I have reached out in the past to the presenters. And they're usually quite kind in sending the information or sending their PowerPoint presentation. So I recommend doing that. And I'll send the list. Of the ones that I attended as well. Um and then the last thing I'll say around regionalization is the key buzzword in New York State right now. And we have asked our superintendent of T S T BOCs to come talk to our board in December. Uh to talk about regionalization, just so we get an idea of what the language is, what people are talking about. Um nothing more than that, and just an information setting. So uh that will be coming up and I'll be working with Adam to. To figure out that agenda when the time comes. Fantastic. Thank you all for that experience. And I will, lastly, begrudgingly. I will agree with Jill that the virtual experience left a lot to be decided or desired. I think they were in twenty-minute sections. And so they just kept sort of running through things.
It was pretty much one guy, a talking head.
Yeah, it didn't allow for much depth, no Q and A at all. Um so we'll have to rethink that, I think, in the future.
Well, also complete the evaluation because this is the first.
We weren't given an evaluation.
Actually, I I um.
Did you?
Yeah, I got several opportunities to online. What happened to them, I don't know.
Because this is their first year.
I think they flagged my email address, so I think it's that. I'll go looking for that. That's for the know. I didn't, I haven't, I've been, because I've been looking for one as well. Great. Um we have two more agenda items for the evening. Um one is the academic calendar revision that was brought to us a couple of weeks ago. Uh I've asked Zach to come speak to us about that as well. Um board members may have seen, we sent out some of the feedback. It was up on the Let's Talk portal. We've received some feedback from uh caregivers and well. I am unsure. Some of them were named, some of them were not named, but we did receive some feedback. So Zach, if you wanna just uh speak to it and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so um this is um before you have the option to uh. Accept the changes to the calendar. And so in this case, we're looking at um. Moving the conference date and uh professional development days on March thirteenth and March fourteenth to the twentieth and twenty-first. Um there's a couple um reasons why this was brought forward. I believe Mary Grover spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, but just to remind folks. Uh one, this gives our ICSD students who attend BOCs programming a day back, they would have lost a day. Um because they would have been not aligned with BOCs. Um so that's, you know, well over a hundred kids that. Go to various BOCs programs and then lots of different collaborations. Additionally, for the professional development day on the twenty-first, there's regional offerings. So a lot of our districts works work together. In conjunction with BOCs to offer professional development for teachers that allows them to um sort of our teachers to go join in these things as well. Um so that's the first part. And then the second part is just a modification to the high school. Um allowing uh regions uh to be offered on June tenth, um specifically for the biology regions, I believe. Have to double check that, but I'm uncertain it's biology, um which has a a large number of students. So that's sort of the only day it would fit um in there.
For comments, questions? Yes.
Is it possible to separate out those? I I I find the uh regions date change compelling. Um after reading the comments on Let's Talk, I'm I'm less convinced that changing the calendar at this point. Is uh is is uh worth the pain for uh. Working families and caregivers is worth what we gain by allowing. People to go to professional, regional professional development, and I would vote against that. Um so if we could separate out those two things, that would be helpful.
Well, this is discussion time, right? About it. So um changing the calendars also to put in. Alignment with T S C BOCs and have students attend who attend BOCs to be able to.
So, yeah, so if like, because if BOCs is closed on those days, but then like. We need to stay in alignment with them, right? Because on, you know, if we have school that day, bust all our kids out. We take our kids to BOCs and you go to BOCs. But if we're closed, we're not necessarily taking those kids to BOCs on those days.
Does that mean they'd have to find their own transportation in in on that day? Or does that mean they don't go? Or what happens?
I think um this would be a, I don't remember this happening anytime recently. So I think, you know, in some cases, folks will will find it. And then in some cases, I, you know, I think we'd have to think creatively about eventual solutions.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I guess, I'd like to maybe echo Jill's comments. I mean, we we did hear from some community members who expressed some concern about making a late change. Um it is kind of complicated to plan, you know, between, you know, when people working at different universities. And different calendars. Um so I I think I was sensitive to those those comments as well that we're making a later change. I mean, it is, we still have several months. Before March, um but I think some of the feedback was that people were were frustrated that we'd make a change in the middle of the school year. So I just wanted to acknowledge that since we did get some comments about that.
I I acknowledge and appreciate the frustration with um people scheduling it. Um some comments came through. That can we be in alignment with one higher ed and another higher ed? It turned out our spring. Time was in alignment with them, but we're we we have to make sure we do X number of days per year. For teaching and learning as well as if we're connected within the BOCs area. Just for clarification, the calendar that I'm looking at at the moment is saying. We're moving from the thirteenth and fourteenth to the twentieth and twenty-first.
Right.
So currently, the thirteenth and fourteenth, we had as caregiver day.
Yes.
Right? And whereby it would be a day off for students.
Um so the caregiver day for elementary students, they would not be attending school. I believe it's a half day for our middle schools. The high schoolers are still.
Right. But yet there are some students who are in the high school is attending either way.
The high schoolers, yes, they would be, they would be attending, but then um. But then on the the following, you know, the following week, they wouldn't, you know, like you you miss a day. Like the following week, there's no school for them, but.
Right, because District Conference Day is one of those days. Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure exactly number wise. How many people? We did hear from some, a lot of people on Let's Talk, but did we hear from? Half the school population? I don't think so.
We received seventeen responses.
Seventeen responses to say that we can't proceed.
No, actually, it was seventeen responses. I want to say eight were advocating against. For the reasons that Jill has rightly articulated, difficulty for parents, planning for childcare, you name it. We recognize any change in the calendar is difficult. Uh six were in favor, so not a significant difference, but just noticed that they were actually happy for the change for a variety of reasons. Including including Pi Day, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, I try.
Um and then um four comments uh made comment about the calendar change. But tangentially, and more talking about other issues, be it athletics. Um and I would humbly say, and because I am on the mic, I will say it, um there are times when I think folks write to us. Uh particularly with a tone and an accusation, and I would actively encourage folks who may have some displeasure. Um to reach, to actually reach out to us for a dialogue or even include your name so we can actually engage in a conversation. And it would be good for us to model the kind of thing that we're accusing folks of not doing. So if you're accusing people of not being in conversation, then let's try to as best we possibly can to model a message that. Invites a dialogue rather than says, well, you're not gonna pay attention to what I'm saying anyway. We can assure you, you're looking at board members, we probably read read all of those and with and eagerly. So. We do pay attention. We do listen. It may not change the outcome or the vote, but we do pay attention. We do listen. So that was about the breakdown that as I saw um to to Jill's question, I don't know. I don't know if that's for lack of, it's not even an amendment. I don't know if that's friendly. I don't know if this is a situation that um it would disrupt parents. If we would were to table it and that would be December tenth would be the next time that we have a voting meeting. I don't know that that may be disruptive as well, so I I'm.
Well, I wasn't suggesting tabling. I was suggesting splitting the motion so that we would have one motion for. The gen- the uh January tenth regions.
Yep.
And another motion for those other changes.
And I would like to have some additional information because I don't know how one impacts the other.
Okay.
Right? And particularly for talking about instructional hours and instructional days. Um if we're moving to the regions, it maybe it doesn't have an impact at all.
I don't think we're, I don't think that's a concern in terms of the instructional minutes as related to these changes.
We're just moving that region today. That's what I'm thinking about. Um so I so I hear you, you would like to separate the two of those as for a vote. If we're gonna talk about changing the calendar, which I don't think we can, we should object to. We can, we can do it and see what happens.
You're you're, are you requesting to separate it because you're not in agreement with the March change or just, right? Yeah. And and this is where I go back to saying the numbers that we received, they. Several more were against the March change, but that's not a reflection of the community, the. Those ICSD community to say, to justify that. Um we need to go with what we hear from the public. And we're grateful and appreciate people responding to the Let's Talk because it's um brought out some other things, but. Is that sufficient amount to justify saying, no, we don't proceed with this?
Well, Emily, I'm sorry, my apologies. Emily was gonna, you wanted to speak?
That's, you can go first.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say in response to that, I mean, I think for me, it wasn't like that it was an overwhelming number of people that said it. It was just that the. Point that was raised, you know, just resonated that, you know, that is a consideration. That's all. Not 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 that. We heard from so many people, but just that we heard a a perspective that was articulated in those comments that that resonated with me.
Can I just add one thing in terms of the timeline that people want to refer to? We adopted this calendar in April of two thousand twenty-four. So prior to the end of last academic year, and then during that time, T S T BOCs. Received, I had a new superintendent and a new board, and it took them a little bit longer to pass their calendar. So the discrepancy was we passed our calendar first prior to T S T BOCs. Passing their calendar and then sort of now we're going back to try to retrofit. So I wanted to answer one of the. Comments that we got, like, it seemed like you all were out of line here, possibly, but there was a reason for that out of lo- alignment was that there was. Changes at that administrative level, which then now has an impact on on us.
This, I'm just curious, this seems like a longer term. Change that we want to or or thing that we want to be paying attention to, which is making sure that these dates are in alignment. And so this vote we're talking about is just for this one year, which means that if it didn't happen. Um because, you know, we did hear from more people who were against it than were for it. We wouldn't be like suddenly saying that the calendars will forever be. Misaligned and that people year after year will be missing this opportunity. It'll be. A single day from this year that we don't, and it's optional. These are optional P D opportunities.
No, these are.
These are, right, I guess that's why they're, well, right, I guess that's. Um so I just want to clear, like, we're not talking about like a long-term thing. We're saying for this one year. And if, and for the people who did write in with frustration or concern, um. You know, we could just make a decision as of April, when we make the new calendar, that it would be in alignment next year. So I just, I I want to make sure that we're clear about like the weight with which we're like on either side, like it's a. It's a single day and is it more important for, we didn't hear from a bunch of people that were like, oh, my gosh, thank gosh. Thank goodness that we're gonna, I'm gonna be able to have this day. And we did hear from more people who said like, I have real concerns about this. So. It's also like we're weighing, we're not weighing the yeses and the noes. We're weighing noes against. I mean, even like the yeses, it's okay. We're very like, sure, it's fine. Not like, oh, my gosh, this is really gonna be. Like groundbreaking change. So I just would like put all of that.
Absolutely.
Out there.
I I just thought of another factor and that's, I think you pointed out, Sean, this is not um an unusual occurrence. This has happened. Numerous times in my recollection and that when that happened in the past, we did provide busing. Um for our students, even though it was a day off, we did provide busing to BOCs. So it's not like BOCs is closed to us on those day, that day. It's just that. The student doesn't have to go, but many of them will, particularly for uh the nurses aid course or courses where their attendance is important. They would have the option to do that.
And we have the ability to offer this to our drivers and work with transportation, sort of come up with creative plans, so.
Yeah.
That is doable.
And I I just want to, why I say the number seventeen versus like um fifty, one hundred parents or two hundred. Is when we changed at shorter notice, the day for the eclipse earlier this year. That was shorter notice than this. When the changes went through and even our um student reps did a survey and we heard from students. Caregivers, community members with regard to taking the day off. And this is just a, we're given this more advanced notice.
That was actually quite interesting because we were told not to do it. And then as we got closer, we were told to do it. So it was very.
I voted against that. I'm against calendar changes.
We've had a couple of calendar changes and maybe the idea is a note, no matter what this vote is. The note is that we try to hold off a little bit later in the year before we adopt our our calendar. Even while it's irony that we're trying to plan to give us people as much time as possible to plan, but we have made a couple of changes over the past two or three years. So how best to proceed, board colleagues?
Well, I mean, we could vote on it as is and see if it passes. If it passes, it's kind of a moot point. And if it fails, we could revisit, possibly breaking it down into two. I don't know what's easier, you know.
Trying to make sure we would, here's where I would try to make sure we would follow Robert's rules. That would have to be brought up by someone who. Was in not in favor, if I'm making sense. Right? Like that could only be revisited again by someone who voted against it if it didn't pass. For someone who voted for it, wouldn't be able to bring it back up again. Does that make sense to folks?
So if it failed, somebody who voted no could then suggest an amendment and then like breaking it into two or whatever.
That's correct. And at this point in time, if that's the want of the board, I would just say, let's just break it into two now and have that conversation. As opposed to trying to take three votes, let's just see if we can't separate the two and proceed. It'd probably be the cleanest way to make it, make it happen.
Okay. Do we motion that?
We can.
Okay. Uh so then I would move to modify um the resolution and to break it into two separate. Votes, one about the region stay and one about the uh March uh conference stays.
Is there a second for the? Yep.
Yes.
You second that?
I do.
All right. So now we're just gonna vote on the idea of separating them into two. Does that work? All in favor of separating them into two votes? Okay, fantastic. That passes. Next. Let's go each of the, each of the changes, one at a time.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So logistically, if we're separating it into two. So logistically, if we're separating it into two, are we doing eleven point three point one, eleven point three point two?
Nope, these are just different motions in the same agenda.
Oh, okay.
So the first would be to see if we have support for moving uh, March thirteenth and March fourteenth to March twentieth and March twenty-first. So we will entertain that function if someone's willing to do so.
So I move to accept the proposed changes to the ICSD academic calendar. For twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. To change the caregiver conference and district-wide P L C days from March thirteenth and fourteenth to March twentieth and twenty-first.
Second.
Moved by Karen, second by Adam. Further discussion, debate, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? That's a phenomenal vote. I don't think I've seen that in quite some time, you know? Let's do the second part of this. Which would be the regions day on June tenth.
Okay, I, um, I would move to um. A proposed change to the Ithaca City School District Academic Calendar for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twelve, twenty-five school year. As follows, to have the regions, a region, an Ithaca High School Regents' Day. Um, on June tenth. Uh, for Ithaca High School only.
Second.
Moved by uh, Jill, second by Adam. Additional debate, discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? That one is unanimous. Thank you. We'll follow up with any implications that, that may have, just so we can. Come back around. We'll let board members know either via email or at the next board meeting. Thank you very much, Zach. Appreciate it. Um, our last agenda item for this evening is a new roots renewal legal notice. Um, I tried to send it out to email to board members, want to make sure we notify our community. Uh, New Roots is applying for a renewal of their charter through the SUNY Charter School Institute. Because New Roots is located within the Ithaca City School District. We are the district that is responsible for hosting this public hearing. There is nothing more for us to do other than be a host of the public hearing. And then report any feedback received to the Charter School Institute. Um, that's the, the role that we play and it's, um, I think I sent out a link so folks can see what the renewal process looks like. Um, but we don't have much say in it. Um, we can always make a statement if the. Board chooses, like any school district can or any entity can. Um, but the, what's the motion that's here is to make sure that we're able to post the legal notice. To then make sure that we can identify the date of the hearing, then hold the hearing. And then we'll give the information to the Charter School Institute. Yep.
Motion to direct the district clerk to prepare and publish the legal notice of public hearing on the charter school application for new roots. At six o'clock P M on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four at York Lecture Hall. Ithaca City School District at four hundred Lake Street, Ithaca, New York, one four eight five zero.
Second.
Moved by Joe, was that, Adam, was that you? No, second by Adam. Question, conversation, debate? Yes, Karen.
We're, we're scheduled to have a facilities and finance committee that day.
Um, what we'll then do is then put these in between facilities and finance. Uh, who is to say what the turnout would be? The past two times this has happened. Um, there has not been a single person that showed up for the hearing. Uh, years prior, it's been thirty people. So again, I don't, who's to know where we're at at this point in time? But we'll schedule it for a half hour. We need to go longer, we'll do that. Um, if we don't, we'll figure out a different way for the time. Is that? Sort of what we were thinking, Emily, about that? Yeah. Any additional questions, board members, comments?
No, tha- thank you, Karen. I um, I was stuck on November and I didn't spot the December twelfth conflict. So thank you.
To our community, well, let me, first things first. Any additional comment, question? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? Fantastic. Passing honestly, uh, to our community, um, given the month of November and December, between breaks, between election day. Between other things, our traditional schedules have been moved around quite a bit between committees, between advisory councils and. Voting meetings, please pay attention. Our uh, clerk does an excellent job of trying to get the information out. But you will find that we're being, holding some of our committee meetings on. One on a Wednesday, a couple on Thursdays, and so there'll just be more information happening. Um, and that is already posted, but just to make sure that folks are aware that there'll be some changes to our meeting schedule the next uh, four or five weeks. Fantastic. And with that being said, um, if the board, if, if it's the will of the board, um, we can entertain a motion for executive session. I believe the language is posted.
Motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding. Proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen. Of the Civil Service Law and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal. Of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Debate or discussion? All in favor? And all opposed? Did you catch that? Fantastic. Uh, this will be the last item. We will not be engaged in any more vote, voting items upon completion of our executive session. The meeting will be closed. Uh, thank you all. We'll see you.
No, cause there's no.
As a protest vote.